Good morning. It is nine AM and I will call to order the February twenty-third meeting of the Slayne County Boarding Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Mr. Sparks?
Here.
Mr. Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. If everyone can make sure that all microphones, phones, and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceeding clearly, I would appreciate it. Now Brad, our IT director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting. Good morning, Brad.
Good morning. Assuming everyone is using the Zoom client, if you select the participants icon down in the lower part of the screen, that will open up a raise hand function in the lower right-hand portion of your screen. If you select raise your hand, that lets the host know that you'd like to speak.
Okay. Thank you, Brad. At this time, we will move into our citizens' impact portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and are pertaining to items not on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the commission at this time?
Mr. Chairman, no one has raised their hand at this time.
Okay, thank you, Brad. At this time, uh, at this time, we'll move into our consent agenda, which consists of, uh, the approval of prior minutes, approval of the tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any commissions, commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda? Carrying no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. At this time, we will move into the action items.
Item number one, RFA one-two-seven dash two-one, Federal Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program with Captain Jim Hughes from the Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Captain Hughes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I'm before you today to, uh, talk to you to, uh, consider action on accepting the two thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars from the Federal Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. A little history on that is, uh, the JAG grant, the Justice Assistance Grant, is administered by the Justice Programs for the Bureau of Justice Assistance, and it allows local governments to support broad-range activities to prevent control crime and, uh, justice system, um, programs. Uh, the JAG grants are awarded directly to local governments, and it's awarded according to a formula based on the population served by the FBI violent criminal statistics. The city of Salina has been offered eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars for the fiscal year twenty-twenty in JAG funding. Um, part of that, uh, that money awarded to the police department, um, they're required, or if they accept it, they're gonna, they're gonna have to share two thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars with Slayne County. And that's part of a, um, a formula they have in identifying, uh, the type of, uh, population you have. So, two thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars of that money, which would leave the city with fifteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Um, if we would accept this grant, that would be roughly about what each jurisdiction would obtain if they, um, applied separately. Uh, the Sheriff's Office has identified two thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars worth of water-related rescue recovery equipment that would enhance the capabilities and response of the Sheriff's Office boat team. The, uh, Sheriff's Office is requesting that the, uh, County Commission enter to agreement with the city of Salina and accept the JAG program grant. That will enable the Slayne County Sheriff's Office to utilize the two thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars to purchase water, uh, recovery and rescue equipment. Doing so would, uh, have no, uh, impact to the county budget. This is a non-matching fund grant. Uh, these, the equipment would be purchased out of the, uh, grant fund, would go straight to the, uh, the Sheriff's Office boat team. A, a Slayne County Sheriff, Roger Solden, uh, has reviewed this and, and he is on board. I had talked to, uh, Hannah Stanbaugh, and I know she told me that she was going to, uh, give this MOU that the city's requesting to Mr. Montoya County Counselor for review, as, as I failed to do so. And, uh, maybe Hannah can, can chime in on that if I'm speaking, uh, out of term. But, uh, the, uh, staff recommendation would be to accept this, uh, money for the grant, or you could, uh, not accept it, or, or give, uh, give myself direction on, uh, further information you'd need.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Captain Hughes, is this an annual thing that, that this grant comes up on an annual basis?
It does. It comes up annually. I know the Sheriff's Office has taken advantage of this in the past. Uh, we have used it on a couple of different occasions to, uh, help, uh, fund the Sheriff's Office boat team. And, uh, I don't think the city of Salina or, uh, Slayne County participated last year, but I know in the years past, we have.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any, uh, questions or comments from the Commissioners? Saying no, okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
Mr. Chairman, no one has raised their hand.
Okay. I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Chairman, I move, we approve by signature the memorandum of understanding with the city of Salina to receive the JAG funds. Mr. Shadwick?
Commissioner Wees has seconded that motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we, uh, approve RFA dash one-twenty-seven dash twenty-one, Federal Edward, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Mr. Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Captain Hughes. Next item. And Mr. Hughes, back to you.
Item number two, RFA one-twenty-eight dash two-one, MOU with Kansas State Fire Marshal Office to provide water rescue services as part of Kansas Task Force One.
Uh, good morning again.
Good morning.
Uh, the information in, uh, in front of you is the, uh, uh, the MOU for the State Fire Marshal's Office. And what that is, uh, the Slayne County Sheriff's Office and Salina Fire Department have a joint water rescue team. Uh, you know, they have their own equipment, their own personnel. We have our own equipment. We have our own personnel. However, uh, we cross-train together. Uh, we are trained to the same standards, uh, each agency is, and, uh, they're trained on our equipment and we're trained on their equipment. Uh, the idea being if there's any type of water rescue recovery mission in, in Salina or Slayne County, uh, we have each other's equipment. We can make a squad depending on, uh, whose equipment's available and whose where, uh, with what equipment. And, uh, having, doing that, you know, we can respond to any local or regional, uh, emergency without, uh, any issues and, and we're always happy to do that. However, when there is a, a federal emergency, uh, FEMA would get involved if there is one locally, regionally, or, uh, within another state, um, and we would, uh, be requested to deploy to help with any type of rescue or recovery efforts, uh, the Kansas State Fire Marshal's Office gets involved in that through FEMA. They're part of the Kansas, uh, Task Force One. Uh, in the past, when we have responded with, uh, the Salina Fire Department, we have always made an MOU with the fire department, kind of at the last second, and it's basically agreeing the Sheriff's Department is gonna be attached to the fire department. He's attached to Kansas Rescue One, or Kansas Task Force One, and then, and then we all go as a, as a team. Um, we've talked to, uh, the fire department and, uh, the State Fire Marshal's Office, and they're on board with the Sheriff's Office. Um, being a part of the team, they, they really, um, were a desirable asset to them along with the fire department. Uh, however, it'd be a lot more efficient if we were a standalone, uh, entity with the Fire Marshal's Office. We had the MOU, um, and the, uh, the agreement pre-planned. So if there is, is there any type of emergency, um, we can go, um, efficiently without having to sign last-minute paperwork. Uh, the paperwork in front of you is, um, from the Fire Marshal's Office. They require every agency that, um, is, uh, wanting to participate, have it. Um, and then also there's a, a letter of an enabled authority that, uh, needs to be signed, uh, by the commission as well that will, uh, allow us to, uh, participate. Sheriff Solden has, uh, reviewed this. Uh, he, um, is a hundred percent supportive of, of the boat team and, and supportive of, of helping anybody that needs, or, or, uh, giving help to anybody that needs it. Uh, County Counselor Mike Montoya has reviewed the, the MOU. He said, is it appropriate to sign if, if it's something the commission desires to do? As, as far as budget impact, uh, from past experiences with, uh, federal emergencies, i- if we're deployed, uh, the federal government does reimburse the county fund. I can speak, uh, to that with, um, some certainty due to, um, Hurricane Harvey that we deployed to, and then, so a couple of years ago, when we, um, sent assets to the Reno County wildfires, the FEMA would, would reimburse the, um, the county for any expenditures. So as far as a budget impact, if we were deployed to something major, traditionally, the, um, the federal government does reimburse the county. Uh, however, if we're sent to Beloit or Manhattan or any place locally or regions, regionally, uh, the funds, uh, used to, uh, su- support that mission would, would be absorbed by, uh, Sheriff's Office budget.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Captain Hughes. Very enlightening. And, uh, are there any questions or comments from the Commissioners? I, I have a, Captain Hughes, is, is you just talked a little bit there about a couple items or times that they've been deployed. Is this often used very often at all, your, your, this, this water?
Ye- yes, it has. Um, you know, last spring, we were active with the, uh, the fire department. Um, there's a couple, uh, uh, summers before that, we were active down in Gypsum. Uh, we were, uh, making pre-arrangements, uh, around, uh, the New Cambridge area last year with the Salina Fire Department. I know the Salina Fire Department has assisted us on a couple of different occasions, um, for evidence recovery, um, looking for certain things, um, out in rural Slayne County on the river. So, um, you know, they have, uh, some nice equipment that, that we don't have, and we all just share. And, uh, so our water rescue team, um, we do train, and, um, we are deployed. Uh, thank goodness that, uh, we're not used as, as much as, um, uh, uh, as oft, very often, but, but, uh, we are, uh, used on occasion, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. How many, about how many people are trained in that water resource here?
We have five members of the boat team right now.
Okay.
And, um, we are, uh, there was, we lost a, a member due to, uh, he took a new employment. So we have five members, five members from the Slayne County Sheriff's Office boat team, and we're all, uh, trained internally. There are some of us that have been, um, trained through, uh, different organizations, and this spring, we're looking with the fire department to do some more joint, joint training, as they have, uh, some people that need to be, um, up-trained as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments by the Commissioners? Any member of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised.
Okay. At this time, we'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Commissioner Wees here. Mr. Chairman, I move the approved by signature memorandum of understanding with State Fire Marshal's Office signing lately forty-one.
Commissioner Vidrickson, I'll second that.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA dash one-twenty-eight dash twenty-one, MOU with the Kansas State Fire Marshal Office to provide water rescue services as part of Kansas Task Force Number One. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Mr. Vidrickson?
Aye.
Mr. Shadwick?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Next item?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, RFA one-two-nine dash two-one, Submission of Public Development District Application for Jail with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Morning, Mr. Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator. So while we're on a little bit of a public safety theme this morning, we thought we would continue, uh, that theme and talk a little bit about the jail project. As the commission and the public is aware, the voters of Slayne County last November approved construction of a new jail and sheriff's office facility and, uh, issuance of bonds to pay for all of that. Uh, as part of that project, your commission in December signed a contract to purchase some land in the north Salina area. That contract is contingent upon a couple of things. One was making sure that, uh, the soils were suitable up there, which, uh, we've done, and that's all good. And the second part was zoning and land use approvals from the city of Salina because that parcel is located within the city limits. The first step in that, um, was submission of a request to vacate a street. Uh, the, uh, parcel, although it has been farmed for many, many years, was actually subdivided, uh, back in the seventies, uh, and there is a platted street that runs right through the middle of where we would like to now build a jail. So that item was submitted to the city of Salina in, uh, January, and last night at the Salina City Commission meeting, they considered that request. They did pass the ordinance vacating that street on first reading last night, but they deferred the second reading of that ordinance until, uh, consideration of the item that's before you today. And that item is a planned district, public development district, sorry, so many Ps and Ds, public development district application, uh, which is what the city calls a conditional use permit, basically, uh, allowing us to actually construct a jail facility on that property. And so I'm going to turn the presentation over to our architect, Jeff Lane with Trainer HL, who will just walk through a few slides. I'll let, uh, Brad bring up those slides for us of, uh, the items that will be, uh, submitted to the city this Friday, uh, upon your approval today. So Jeff, take it away.
Excellent. Thank you, Phil. I appreciate that. Um, so Commissioners, thank you for your time today. I do want to walk through, uh, what Phil's talked about and kind of walk you through what the submission is. And to Phil's point, we did have a, a very good meeting yesterday with the city, uh, good understanding of where we want to go. Um, and I think this is a, uh, just the next step in the process. Um, so to Phil's point, this is the public development district. Um, it is a, a step that has to go through as it relates to the jail development, and, uh, we're, we're replacing it on the site. I will tell you, this is very similar to what you currently have, uh, within your current facility, uh, here in downtown. Uh, so it's the same type of setup. So this will allow you to expand or do other things down the road as, uh, uh, within the future. Next slide, please. So if you remember, I'm gonna take you way back. I'm gonna take you back to the referendum. Uh, so if you remember, uh, back in, in, uh, when we were trying to get this, uh, passed and trying to develop a plan that made sense for your community, we looked at something fairly similar to this, uh, from both from a plan perspective, uh, of the building, as well as from a site plan perspective. We didn't have a site at the time, so we looked at, um, just some generic ways to make sure that we had public parking by the public lobby. We had staff parking by the staff areas, um, and then we also had LAC parking by the Sallyport. So all of those things, uh, were part of, uh, that fut, that, that development that we looked at early on. Next slide, please. And then if you can remember the, uh, what we looked at as well at that time related to the overall building aesthetics. Uh, so with the referendum, we looked at, uh, providing materials, uh, that were pre-cast, uh, maybe cemental panel and glass, but really trying to provide a civic entrance to the building, um, but keeping the form and the mass of that building very simple. Um, we also had light monitors or clear story lighting that we were bringing into the dayroom spaces, booking area, uh, as well as, uh, some of the areas in the medical. This was, again, kind of what we had shown early on, some glass front for the entry space, um, and then just the overall form of the building. Next slide, please. So moving to the PDD, the next, uh, the rest of the information that you will be seeing here today that I'll present to, that most likely is information you've either seen or, uh, information that, um, uh, you, you saw last week. But this is the same information that we're gonna provide to the city for the PDD. So, um, we, we want to be able to present this to you today, uh, share the same information as well. So this is the outline in the light blue color that we have of the site itself. Um, we are providing access to the public and staff and emergency off of Pacific, which is the road, uh, at the top of that, uh, image there. Um, so, so all of that will happen, and we'll show you further in a site component. But, uh, just wanted to share that, kind of that's get you oriented from the site perspective. The other element that Phil mentioned in the, in the initial conversation was the Woodland Street that you see dashed in, kind of there in the middle of the, uh, site itself, and that is the vacation that we're working through currently with the city. And then from a utility standpoint, we're bringing all new utilities to this site. But one of the other utilities that we're continuing to coordinate and work with is Evergy, who is planning to provide a, uh, new utility line along, uh, overhead line along the, uh, tracks, the train tracks. So we are in continuous conversations with them, um, but that is one of the items as we work through this site and work through the PDD that you'll be seeing as well, uh, in further development over the next few months. Next slide. So this is our preliminary survey that we received of the site. Uh, you'll see two slides on this. Again, pretty straightforward information. We'll be submitting this. It shows some grading. It gives utility locations. It, uh, also has all the, uh, legal subscription information here as it relates to the site that you guys will be purchasing. Next slide, please. And then this is the second half. Um, with the large amount of site, we weren't able to fit it all on one, but you can get a general gist of where we are. I can tell you that the site's pretty flat based on what we understand from the grades. So we'll be working through that over the next few months as well. Um, but, but that is the general information that we have here as well as the utilities. Just again, to be able to understand where we're gonna bring utilities to the site, or to the building. Um, so this was a, a great piece to have, and then just a requirement by the PDD. Next slide, please. So the next few, uh, slides that you're going to see are the slides that we've been working on over the, or images and, and concepts and layouts that we've been working on here over the last, uh, three months. So since the first part of December, our team's been meeting, uh, both with, um, the sheriff's staff, uh, stakeholder groups, and working through both how to site the building, uh, as well as access to the building and utilities. Uh, we'll also talk about footprint of the overall building layout itself, and then we'll also talk about the building massing and aesthetics. And I want to tell you, I'm gonna do a quick overview here today, and, and we can talk further about some of these items on March ninth, when I come and talk about schematic design. Um, so, but I'm open to talking about any questions you have, but I do want to let you know that we will be back to have some further discussions, uh, here in the next couple of weeks. So in this site, you can see that we've, uh, oriented the building in the fashion that it faces, uh, about northeast. Um, we looked at that a lot of different ways, um, but when it came down to it, it really came down to both, uh, access from Pacific, uh, providing adequate parking for public and staff, as well as, uh, sun and, uh, the cold winds and things along those lines that orient the building, I think in a, in a ma- a manner that really will be energy efficient from the standpoint of, of overall long-term for the county. It also fit really well on the site from this perspective to provide some, uh, expansion. So you can see that we've got some ability to be able to expand both to the north there from both housing and a standpoint of, of operations or staff area, if so chose, down the road. Uh, there is some ability to expand to the, to the west a little bit as well. So anything that is dashed in any of the plans that we currently have, um, are all future expansion. You can also see, though, that because we have the ring road and, and things along those lines, that can be adjusted down the road if need be for any expansion capability that, that the county so chooses. Um, also what I will share is, based on the PDD, this is, doesn't require you as a county to build exactly what's dashed in. So if you wanted to down the road, fifteen, twenty, thirty years, um, classification changes, uh, the needs of the county changes, uh, the design of what that could be can be completely different than what we're showing. We just want to make sure that we show the county, or the city, sorry, that there is the potential for expansion and that, and that the county may expand down the road. That helps from the standpoint of the PDD, uh, from you, uh, as a county, so that you don't have to go back and do it again, uh, for these types of items. It's just an administrative, um, endeavor down the road. So, uh, the other element I'd like to show here, uh, or point out is that we do have, uh, there at the closest to the tracks is the Sallyport. So we do have law enforcement parking there as well as the Sallyport to bring into the intake and booking area. And then housing is all on the west portion of this, and we'll get into a little bit more detail down the road. Uh, next slide, please. Done that. There you go. Thank you. So on this, um, in this slide, we've begun our grading based on the survey that we've received. So there's still some work we've got to do here, but, uh, we've started to grade around the building and show how that works, uh, making sure that both we have a flat site, uh, for the, for the building itself, as well as making sure that we as well as making sure that we've got water moving away. This site also starts to indicate where we want to have utilities coming into the building itself. Most all of our utilities will be coming in through the north portion in that little Alcoa space. That's the dock area. We've got mechanical there. And then we also have some other utility components there, generator and transformer and those types of items. So most all of our utilities will be coming in through that direction there. Next slide, please. So this is a landscape plan that we've begun. This is a plan that really starts to outline kind of how we want to manage the site itself holistically. So we've been talking through this from the standpoint and making sure that we do the right things around the building itself from the standpoint of the public spaces, making sure that those are landscaped well, providing low-profile plantings, as well as then providing some trees and areas outside of that. So off of the access road from Pacific and up to the actual public parking area. Most everything else is grass, whether that be a native grass or a fescue grass, we'll continue to work through. All of this though, from the standpoint of the PDD, meets the requirements set forth from the city standpoint as it relates to landscaping. So what we're showing currently meets that need and meets the requirement. So we aren't doing anything here at this point to provide something that we'd less than what they require. We aren't at this point also doing anything to provide more. So that will be a part of our discussion here over the next few months to determine and finalize out any of the other landscaping that we may want to do in addition to what's straightforward from the standpoint of the city's requirements. Next slide, please. And again, here on this slide, this is the floor plan. So this is the plan that we've been working through here over the last three months. So again, the lobby there on the right-hand side of the image in the beige color, that is the public lobby space. So we've provided a public lobby area that actually now has access from records to the secure area, to also from the sheriff's operation side and the sheriff's office side. And the sheriff's office side is the side there to the north of the lobby or up from the lobby there in the brown color. We also have lockers, evidence, storage. We have a fitness area, a break area for staff in that same area as well. We also have the record storage space and records office space right in that area. So all of that is, for a lack of a better term, is our non-secure area and the operation side for the sheriff's staff. Once we move, kind of there's that corridor space that's yellow that runs kind of up and down east and west in the middle. That's really the secure portion of this project. That separates our non-secure component to our secure component. So the purple area there is the booking area. The blue, pink and gray area, that's our medical and special needs area. We programmed out early on. Across from that to the upper portion of that is our kitchen area and maintenance area, medical or sorry, mechanical area and kind of the service back of house spaces. And then where you see that dark green and blue area, that's our programs. So we've incorporated and kept our courtyard space for the program space, classroom spaces and office spaces there. I will also tell you that we've provided some staff breakout areas along in the secure area for the staff as well. And we could talk a little bit more about that at the next meeting. But those are some of the things that we've been able to make sure that we've incorporated. And then on the left-hand side there is our housing units that we've incorporated. So the blue currently is male and then the pink is female. All of those at this point are very similar in both sides, as well as overall flexibility for any use at this point. Next slide. This slide shows the mezzanine level for that housing area that we have. So you can see that the housing areas here on the left-hand side do include a mezzanine level for those in custody. Next slide, please. So overall, from the standpoint of the exterior of this building, not much has changed from our referendum. We've developed it a little bit further, created there on the top image, precast that goes around this building with glass front for the entry space and the lobby space. Kept everything pretty straightforward from a material standpoint, from metal panel to glass, providing natural daylighting into the office spaces, especially into the staff areas and into the booking areas. The lower, the middle image just shows an image to that back of house area that I just talked about. In the middle of that section onto the right-hand side is the housing area where we're bringing our natural daylighting in above, as you can see there on the clear story, into those, each of the housing areas. And then on the left-hand side is the kind of the staff area there and break and fitness area. And then the lower portion or lower image is just an image of the housing areas from the west. Those are all metal panel and some brief precast there. Again, trying to keep those materials to be a pretty simple palette around the project. Next slide, please. Again, the top image is the same, that housing area. The middle image is the image to the intake Sally ported area and then also from the medical area. So that ribbon of white that you see there is allowing us to bring some natural daylighting into the special needs, sorry, that's special needs, into that special needs area. And then we also have some clear stories that we're showing as well, just to bring some more natural daylighting into the staff areas and other interior portions of the project. Again, trying to, what we talked about through the referendum process, as well as what we've talked about here over the last three months of natural daylighting. And then the last image is just an axon to be able to give you kind of a better idea of the form and the mass of this project. And it's very similar to what you would see as you drive down the access road from Pacific into this site. Next slide, please. So that gets you everything that we'll be providing to the city for the PDD at this point. So I'll open it up to any questions or comments or anything the commission might have.
Thank you, Jeff. So the action that we're requesting today is for the commission to approve the submission of the PDD application to the city of Salina and authorize the chairman to sign the application. The application would actually be due this Friday, which is why we wanted to get in front of the commission today. And as Jeff said, they will be back again in two weeks with some additional details. Some of this may change, but we wanted to make sure that your commission had a sense of the scope of the project and what was being submitted to the city. So Jeff would be happy to answer questions as would I.
Mr. Lane, Roger Sparks here, County Commissioner. How are you doing this morning?
I'm doing great, sir.
Good. Great presentation. Just a couple of quick questions here is one of them is that on the site plan where you show your addition that would happen, and let's say we wanted to keep it the same size and do exactly what we had there. And your dash line went out into the road that's being proposed. At that time, should we look at the road position at this time and say, hey, let's move it a little further one way or the other to accommodate what would happen because?
That's a good question. And yes, we did talk about that. One of the things that also, if you look at that site as well, you actually have quite a bit of space to expand that direction. So what we talked about was the fact that if there was another solution from the standpoint of what that addition looked like, we would probably have to adjust that road anyway. So we were also looking at it from a perspective of cost. We can look at that and circle back, but we kind of thought at this point, we felt pretty comfortable that if we went to go add on, adjusting the road at that time would not be an issue.
Okay. All right. And I know this is way preliminary, we're way preliminary. Is your roofing structure, is it metal or is it the white vinyl type stuff?
A good question. You know, I don't know. I've done this enough. I knew that was coming. I don't know. I don't know what it is about buildings, but I do think that roofs always seem to come up. So great question. So we have a combination of both. We do have a, as you saw there, we do have some sloped roofs that are high pitched. Those are, in our opinion, a metal roof at this point. Some of the other areas are a low slope roof that I like to call it. There is no roof that's flat. If you have a flat roof, you got a problem because the water's not draining to the drain. So a low slope roof does have a slope to it and allows water to drain directly to the roof drains that we'll have on that area. So we have a combination of both. We've talked about two different types of roof products. We've talked about a TPO roof, which is very similar to what you're talking about. It can be of different colors, but probably is close to what you're talking about from a white perspective. We also have looked at a modified bit roof. Both roofs nowadays have about the same warranty period, a 20 to 30-year warranty period. I will tell you, a modified bit roof probably goes a little bit further to that 30-year without a problem. Whereas a TPO roof, they're now seeing themselves get to that 20 to 25 range before you have to go and replace the cover sheet or something along those lines. So we are looking at both of those options, both are very long-term. I've got them on a lot of different buildings and projects we've done over the years and have not had any issues to date.
And I'm sorry, but I just, I see this and I just have to ask this question here. And I think it's the area over the commons where it looks like you have a convex or a concave roofing structure that comes down and all the water would run and run through the middle somewhere and go. At this point, would it be, I mean, can we just make that a pitch from both sides and get rid of the water off of it and make it all? I just observed that and I'm thinking, why?
Well, part, there's actually some logic behind what we're trying to do there. So it's not just an architect drawing some stuff up and saying, this is really neat and we need to do this. So a couple of things, one of the things that we've talked about in our presentations and working with the sheriff's group and Phil and others, is the fact that we want to be sure that there's some, in the public areas, we want to have a location for those that come to register their vehicles and/or have their vehicles inspected. And so one of the things that we've talked about is the fact that we have a cover over that space so that both staff and individuals that are there bringing their vehicles potentially would not get completely rained on. With doing that, we also wanted to tilt the roof so that water wouldn't actually run off of that front space into the public areas. So off of, when I walk in, the hope and intent is that water is running to the back of that area. And so by doing what we've done there, we've actually collected the water into a location and then run it off to the backside for where we'll collect it and take it to where it needs to go. I will tell you that by not doing this, by maybe making it a simpler shape or something along those lines, we're going to spend about the same amount of money as it relates to structure. So at this point, we'd like to be able to collect that water and move it to the right direction in lieu of trying to do something else that may actually provide water to drain off into the, to the public side or have to provide gutters that can be maintenance headaches down the road. So that's kind of what we were trying to do from our design perspective is to be able to move that water to a different location.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments by commissioners? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, there are no hands raised at this time.
Okay. I will begin back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Commissioner Wees here. Mr. Chairman, I move the approved by signature, the Public Development District. Captain, thank you.
Commissioner Shadwick seconds.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 129-21, Submission of Public Development District Application for the Jail. Are there any further comments? If not, then I will call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Lane and Phil.
Thank you.
At this time, we will move into the informational items.
Item number one, county administrators update.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Just a few things. First legislatively, it seems like things have slowed down a bit in Topeka. The legislature does not seem to be operating with the urgency with which they began the session. There was a flurry of activity at the beginning of the session. Some things, including Senate Bill 13, were moving very quickly. We believe that those are still moving, but they have slowed down significantly, in part due to the cold snap last week. A number of hearings were delayed. Senate Bill 13, which I mentioned, was amended in the House Tax Committee. We think those amendments are favorable to local governments and it is awaiting floor action in the House at this point. I also wanted to touch a little bit about federal legislation. Folks are aware that the Budget Reconciliation Act is pending in Congress, which is more colloquially known as the Biden administration's latest relief push for COVID. That is a monumental bill, $1.9 trillion spending bill, but does potentially include funding for local governments. And the preliminary number that we have seen is about $10.6 million for Saline County, which would be significant, but it is not out of the realm of possibility given what we saw with the last stimulus bill, the CARES Act last year that ultimately settled about $11 million into Saline County. So continuing to track that. The other thing that's going on both in Topeka and in Washington DC at the moment is not legislation yet per se, but regulatory conversations around prices for natural gas. As folks are aware, it was very, very cold just a week ago. And as a consequence of that, there were some disruptions to the natural gas supply, which then in turn disrupted the ability to generate electricity using natural gas. It's been most particularly in the news around the state of Texas, but the folks in the Southwest Power Pool, which includes Kansas, also experienced some rolling blackouts. So the governor has signed a letter along with members of the Kansas Corporation Commission to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, asking for investigation of what happened and consumer protections. And so we are looking at that with respect to not only our county residents, but also the county as a business entity. It is interesting the way the county- Um, it is interesting the way the county purchases gas. Uh, we don't just uh, buy gas from Kansas Gas Service. Uh, we buy uh, some of our gas from Kansas Gas Service and then some of our gas we actually uh, purchased through a wholesaler. And those contracts have not been reviewed in a number of years. So um, just uh, looking into all that and we'll probably be bringing something forward to the commission uh, in a couple of months to, to clean some of that up. Uh, the other big item that I wanted to just provide an update on is renovations at the Expo Center. Uh, as the commission and the public are aware, uh, 2021 is year one of a new 30-year lease uh, between the city of Salina and Saline County for the livestock and Expo Center. And as part of that lease, we are committed within the first five years to making some renovations at that facility. And your commission recently approved hiring a project manager, which is the Hutton Company. We met with representatives of them on Friday. Uh, it was a very productive meeting, myself, Deputy County Administrator Hannah Stanbaugh, Rick Lamer and uh, David Flaherty, uh, three staff from Hutton. We spent about two and a half hours together, went through uh, a lot of the wants and desires of the city, uh, your commission, the Expo Center staff and um, how we would um, accommodate all of those. Um, Hutton has requested a bunch of documentation from us to uh, see what they're dealing with. So we've been gathering those documentate, those documents and getting them to them. Um, they do understand that they need to get with Rick um, as much as possible before he retires uh, in the middle of next month and to make sure that they've got a good grounding. And then um, after we had that very productive meeting on uh, Saturday night, uh, there was a water main break at Barn One. And so the Expo Center um, was without uh, water and this also impacted the Tony's Peaks Event Center for a period of time on Sunday and into Monday morning. But I understand those repairs have now been made. I got a email from Reclaimer late yesterday saying their water was back on. Um, so moving ahead with Expo renovations. And that concludes everything that I wanted to uh, update the commission on this morning. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Uh, are there any other comments? Anything else? Okay. No other, no further business. Uh, the February 23rd, 2021 Saline County Board of Commissioners is adjourned. Thank you for your time. Good meeting. Thank you.